...the United States, Constitution of the State of Oregon and the law thereof, and the policies of the state of the schools.
During my term I will faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibilities of the Office of School Board Members to the best of my ability.
During my term I will faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibilities of the Office of School Board Members to the best of my ability.
Okay, welcome. And W., your direct opponent for your own exit. Or...
Alright.
This is why we have to fix the audio. Uh, okay. So I, Dr. Lenford, do you have a copy of this in front of you?
I do.
Okay, so I will keep it saying long as I did the others. I, Dr. Lenford, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Oregon and the law thereof, and the policies of the greater all these schools.
I, Dr. Lenford, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Oregon and the law thereof, and the policies of the greater all these schools.
During my term I will faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibilities of the Office of School Board Members to the best of my ability.
During my term I will faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibilities of the Office of School Board Members to the best of my ability.
Okay, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Alright. Yes, let's go. I have a visit. We're going to elect, uh, Chair and Vice Chair. I'm operating right now because I was the Vice Chair and the Chair is gone. Uh, it's a little far with the Chair and I'll entertain nominations for School Board Chair.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'm going to appoint yourself, uh, as Chairman for the next year for the very well-kept School Board.
Okay. Do you have any other nominations? Okay, wait a second. Second. Okay, do you, yeah, could you look? So all in favor of me as the School Board Chair? Oh, yeah, I'll say the nomination. Yes. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? I don't oppose. Okay, uh, Vice Chair, do you elect a Vice Chair?
Um, I'll move to appoint Brad Wilson as the Board Vice Chair.
I will second that. Do you have any other nominations? Okay, we guys had nominated, uh, and seconded for Brad Wilson to be Vice Chair. All in favor?
Aye.
You oppose? Okay, we have Chair and Vice Chair. Congratulations, Brad Wilson. Thank you. Uh, next thing. Uh, Board Member Calendar Review. Uh, so what we want to talk about here, there's a calendar there. Uh, and our main concern is, I'm not concerned with thought, what's that? What we were doing is an offsite meeting. The offsite meeting, we originally intended to, uh, get the communities and the schools that the meetings were held in to increase attendance, but after several years of doing that, that doesn't appear to be the case. We haven't noticed uh, any correlation between people attending public listening sessions and the school that we're having a listening session in. And it's a lot of work for staff and these other schools. They're not really built. And all of a sudden you see around here, you're running the school meeting normally, so the thought was, or like to entertain the discussion around uh, not doing offsite listening sessions, we're doing them all here in the district office. Any thoughts about that? Do you really have anything you want to say?
Do the two new boardrooms have any questions? This is kind of a problem. I don't even pay attention to being on the machines. Thanks, please ask.
Yeah, I was just saying, I've been hearing a lot of people.
Good.
Lots of people. I mean, I remember many people.
Right, and no, very, very.
I think the overall idea of it is, I just think the actual turnout was not where it would take the staff to go instead of day getting to set up. It does pretty much take majority of the day to get set up, five out of the evening for us, so. It's, I didn't see the value of it, but it's also, where is the actual result of that? So, so.
Okay. Is there anybody that would be opposed to just having all board meetings and listening sessions here in the district office?
No, I'm not opposed. I, my main concern was that there was some, um, discussion on canceling them and I don't like that idea. I'd like to have that open discussion where we can actually have an eight-minute back and forth. Uh, and because sometimes these problems can be solved in a three-minute, one-way conversation. And we need to be able to actually have conversations with the constituents and understand the problem so we can dig into them. So as long as we continue that, I'm fine. It can be here. Okay.
The advantage we have here is a little less for this.
Okay. Uh, Chris, does it sound like any motion to change or meeting to do it? Okay, the plan is we're going to have those four listening sessions like we have. Uh, those will be assigned by zone and things like that will all be here. Okay? Alright, next. Uh, next thing. OSBA training. Um, we've got three options. The idea with two new board members would be to go through some training with the DA on rules and kind of make sure we're all on the same page, uh, with how, how the sort of meetings run and what we are and what we aren't doing. Uh, so, you can see the three options there. Uh, option one would be to do a work session before a board meeting. Uh, that would be four to seven, it looks like, or five to seven. Uh, which option two is a work session on another day that we schedule, or option three is schedule a day of OSBA. Uh, and then we have to go over some dates. So, anybody have any thoughts about? All three, none of them matter. I'm retired. I don't do much, so, don't care. If you have schedules that you have to work around, probably won't be more interested in weighing in one way or the other.
I have no question.
As someone with a semi, not, not super flexible schedule, uh, I would prefer to do one before a meeting. Um, just for sake of it already being kind of blocked off. Uh, but I would kind of be willing to hear the opinions of the two new board members if they feel like that's enough time to get what they think they might need from one of those trainings. Because if it isn't only a couple hours, it might not be as beneficial as opposed to one of the other options.
Comment. We'll know that August 18th and September 15th are both listed. Uh, this would be a training that would continue.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay, okay. Is, is four a blocking problem for anybody?
No.
Channing, you hear it for us?
Yeah.
George, can we, does everybody feel like four, seven, prior to the meetings on the 18th and 15th?
Okay, given that the 18th can't happen, it's probably. Would there be a substitution?
No, it'd be August, August. Yeah, I think it's September.
Oh, August, oh.
That work for you? That work for you?
Yeah. Yeah.
We did that. Thank you. Easy, easy. I just wanted to congratulate you guys. I'm really looking forward to bringing the OSBA into, uh, working on some of the initiatives. So, this will be the first of several proposed proposals. Of course, we have the November conference as well. Okay. Yes. Oh, you have a motion. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve the OSBA training schedule.
I will move to approve the OSBA training for option one.
All second.
Okay, do we need further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You oppose? Okay. Okay, board goals. Uh, as last year the board goal mirrored the superintendent's goals. Um, the whole working joint's the same thing, and, uh, so we want to have a discussion about, uh, whether we want to do separate goals that the board would have, or if we want to continue to be, uh, in alignment on the same thing. Um, anybody have any thoughts, discussion on that?
Andy, have you released your goals yet?
Uh, it'll be coming at the August meeting. I can tell you that our learning systems, the cell, uh, will be a huge piece of work again this year. As we move that, you recall last year we had a hiatus of evaluation of teachers. And so this will be, uh, moving forward from there. That will be one. Uh, the District Facility Committee will be number two. Um, the other area which we have not defined yet would in all likelihood be the behavior rule. This year we changed the format as again, uh, Fairmont is no longer going to serve kids in a completely removed setting, and so, uh, those are the three like things. Two for sure, and then the third still seems to be a, a larger area.
My thought process is, as a group, as a group, all the work we do is through the superintendent. It's a little different than superintendent, so it doesn't even make much sense. We don't even try to do anything outside of that. And then individually, the two things that I care the most about has improved student performance through group instruction and making sure that we have our facilities figured out. Those are already on the list to be goals. Personally, I'd be fine with all the names. That's actually my two cents that we should, and everybody else's.
Personally, I think the general ideas are good, but very similar to what they were last year, just the specifics probably, probably be what's different. Um, is this something we could push off until we actually see what these are at the next meeting and actually wants to know exactly what they're confirming? Get motion or is it something that happened today?
No, I think it's mostly just a discussion to see how it will work.
Well, I would like to see the goal set to improve communication. While I was knocking on doors and, um, listening to people talk at house parties, there was a great deal of feeling of alienation from the district. People felt like the taxes kept going up and they didn't have any, um, any way to get information, any good reliable way to do that. And they were feeling left out, pretty disenfranchised. I think that communication there was really much harder. Uh, since the newspaper is a little bit less robust and newspapers are struggling, it's, that used to be the common denominator. But we really do need to do some communication with people because they're district. It can't be left out. I'd like to see, eye of the sky, I'd like to see something like, um, City puts out bridges. Some kind of document going out and then also perhaps a way to join, um, an email list of updated things. I think we should also be saying, these are the issues we're considering for future, so that when we have to do things like figure out which schools should attend because all these departments move population around, it's not a new idea. So people are not blindsided by things that they didn't anticipate, so. I would just like to see more robust communication taking place as one possible.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. I think last year, I was surprised at how much people either knew the, knew the wrong thing or didn't know things, but, you know, and at the same time I sit here and everything's public, everything's taped, everything's there, right? So I know information exists, it's just not getting where we need to go. Didn't really make sense on it, I, you know, I, I didn't make sense.
Well, it's very hard. Communication is a lot of things.
Right.
But that's why.
Animals support.
I think it's a lot of stuff.
Uh, so maybe the thought is, uh, see what Andy's goals look like in August, if we want to not move straight up or add or tweak our own, make decisions in it.
I will commit that I'll send you drafts earlier so that you guys can even think about that as well.
Okay.
What, what that might, what, what a goal from communication increases would look like. So, 'cause I already have some things that are in the works, but we want it here from you. And your comment earlier issue. So, thank you.
Okay. Board working agreements. So these, uh, let's see, there's not going to be a motion on this, we just reviewed it.
This is information of, uh, board roles, responsibilities, governance will be the OSBA's training that we can, uh, work through and build together with, I think this is what we have. As opposed to just doing it out and then you can play the others.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. It's usually like a three-based document that we put down, one.
Yeah.
And I like it, but I don't, you know, I think it's OSBA.
What's to talk about? That's probably a bit on the tune and tune that is.
Awesome, thank you. Anybody else have any thoughts on that or?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. Uh, we are at disparate leadership team objectives, superintendent.
So you guys have already received the General Community Perception Survey. This was done in 2016. It was done in advance of the Facility Committee that year. Uh, those of you in the audience, it will be attached to the, uh, board packet at closing the meeting. But this is, uh, you know, it's too long to, uh, break down into detail here tonight, but I would ask that you guys look at that, uh, and give some thought. We are intending to put a similar survey out here in September, probably early September, and index it. So what I'd ask that you guys, uh, give some thought to is, uh, are there questions? So there's always a value in comparing the same question over time. But there's also value in if there's new things that you think about, we can ask those as well, so we can get the best of both. I think it'd be a, a really good place to start, and from there I'm sure there'll be a lot more. And so, um, that's, uh, one thing that I wanted to share with you. Uh, before we move into the next thing on the agenda, I do want to just, uh, follow up with, uh, the board. He's received a couple of emails about, uh, mixed grade or multi-age classrooms. We have met with a large, uh, group of the teachers that are impacting and we have worked. I really was impressed with the fact that they came with a solution focus, uh, and it was a pretty good meeting for starters. Um, there's, there's work to be done still to support them. We also have a communication ready. We are waiting right now though to roll over the students, to roll over the students so that we get the message to the right kids, right? So right now we still have the students attached to our system by where they were last year, so we've got to move them up. Uh, that should be, be Bruce's, hoping that that's done by Wednesday. Then we'll send out communication, uh, around that and things. So there's a lot of work to be done this year. We're rolling out the math curriculum, which we're excited to do. Uh, we're also moving back into evaluation, so, uh, lots of stuff to be ready and to communicate about. So I want to take you to personal electronic devices, which there's a slide presentation for. We, we'll begin, we'll begin, okay? So, uh, welcome new board members. Here's the first. So if you'll recall, uh, the, we could not get through the legislature. Legislation built the traditional way that would have addressed, uh, cell phones in schools. So it did, uh, get fairly close, got towards the end of the session, and failed because of the governor. Uh, issued an executive order to that effect, which in many respects just simply moved the process in the legislature to a conclusion. Right, so the fine points that we'll talk about tonight are the fine points that they couldn't quite get agreed on. Uh, and there are some challenges here. Uh, we intend, because this is an executive order, typically you guys get two readings before you turn a, um, policy into an enacted policy. This, in order to get it done by the end of the year, will be done at the August meeting. That's the last meeting before school starts. And so we'll have to share with you, um, the policy as it's done. We do not yet have a final policy that has been sent to us from OSBA. So we are waiting still. In fact, there's been kind of a radio silence since July 10th. But, uh, when we have that, we will move forward. We know that, uh, well, we, we trust that with COSA and, uh, the Department of Education and OSBA working on this, we're going to have a policy. Uh, there are a couple of fine points here that we want you guys to think about. Uh, they will clearly be, um, represented in some form in the final policy that we will present to you. My goal, unless you guys say differently, is that we will enact this before the first of, of the school year. And I think that has been something that I've heard back from you guys, that we don't want to start, go a month and then change.
Is it going to be significantly different than what we already do?
Uh, yeah, I'll show you a couple of them. There's, there are a couple of, uh, challenges here. So, the executive order's goal was to improve academic outcomes by ensuring students are fully engaged in learning within a distraction-free environment that supports their wellbeing, focus, and ability to thrive academically and personally. So that's really the why. I do not know many people that are opposed to that purpose. It is, some people might be offended that it became an executive order as opposed to a law. Some people might be offended at some element in here, but in general, people are in favor of limiting cellphone use in school as a way to better engage kids in their learning and with each other. So, the definition, if you'll know, it means any portable electronically-powered device that is capable of making, receiving calls, making and receiving text messages, accessing the internet independently from the school's network infrastructure. Does not include a laptop or other device that you would use regularly in the classroom. It does include, um, the smartwatches that can, um, people always look so rude when they've got a call from you and they, they look at their watch like they don't have time for you, but. So, the policy requirement timeline, by October 31st, you have to adopt a personal device policy. It has to prohibit the use of electronic devices by students. Applies from the start of regular instructional hours until the end of regular instructional hours. There had been, and there was in the legislature, a lot of debate about that. Many schools give kids the use of their phone in the hallway and at lunch. At this point, the interpretation is that will go away as well. That is, that is one of the moves that the governor made here because that was one of the places where they could not get it. So, uh, it has to be implemented no later than January 1st, and I think we've kind of obviated most of that. It must provide clarity on how devices will be stored during the school day. There are schools who have made large purchases of, there are packs that take the phone basically offline. Um, there are pouches in classrooms. Um, the, the packs that would take away the ability for the internet to reach the phone are, um, fairly expensive. We'd be looking at a large bill to actually do it that way. Uh, many schools have done it, and it generally is a result of the commitment of leadership and an understanding by staff that it's important and it's enforced, and then kids get used to it. Right, so it, money is not the issue here. It is really the, the will and getting everybody to believe into it. So that kids don't walk through the day and know, you know, seven period I'm going to be able to use it. Right, so that begins to undermine other staff members. Uh, we have to share with, uh, our staff, um, actions that we can take when a student violates those requirements. Allowed actions may not authorize or otherwise result in students losing instructional time, which includes suspension or expulsion. Again, a huge, challenging issue here. Uh, I did hear, uh, principal top this year, they were committed to cell phones. They did a pretty good job in their building. Brought the phone down, the parent had to come in, they handed the phone to the parent and promptly turned the phone over to the child. Right, and so there are a lot of challenges with this part of the law. Um, we are waiting to hear some guidance on whether or not that's the cellphone or that's just plain defiance. Right, so we will take a look at that, and I think they're going to come back with an answer in this. But that's, that's a real challenge in this policy. And then of course, the policy has to be posted on the district website. Uh, we will probably, um, take some special steps to publish it in advance rather than wait for it to go to OSBA and have it loaded up there. We'll probably send this policy out and it's enacted so that everybody is aware of what it is that we're doing. So, and then there's several postings. We do have, uh, in the law, the ability to make allowances by a student when the use complies with the terms of a medical provider's order for the care, student's IEP or 504 plan, or written exemption provided for the student based on guidelines adopted by the school district to allow school building administrators to accommodate individual circumstances or to further specific educational outcomes for the student. I think the last little sentence there, to further specific educational outcomes for a student, uh, that's something that we'll probably through the state be working out. What does that look like? If you don't have that though, the ability to, like, does a parent need to go into a 504 plan or an IEP? But even if they have an IEP, how, how does the cellphone help? Right, I think that's the question. If it's not demonstrable, then why would you do that? So there's a lot of work on that page for our administrators. This policy may exclude time when students are not on school grounds and not under the supervision of school personnel other than a school bus driver. Um, they have stayed away from school buses. Um, very difficult to enforce, uh, students got his head down in the back of the bus. Not on school grounds, obviously. Um, uh, another thing, if you'll recall, athletic events are beyond the school day. But they do include field trips during the day as being a place where the cell phones would not be at. So, there are challenges here, right, and pretty much wherever there's like a gray area, it, they, that results in a lot of work, right? I think, you know, one of the questions in my mind, by the 15th time you're taking a phone from a child and there's still, we have to have them not lose any school at all, right? So what does that look like? Right, so, uh, we'll have to work our way through that. And so, we'll bring that policy when we have it, and as soon as we get a recommended policy, I'll send it out to you guys. So you guys can start thinking about that and asking questions. Um, responding to issues of non-compliance must not result in lost instructional time. Suspension or expulsion is not committed, permitted when non-compliance is solely related to device use. Supported disciplinary action may be appropriate when a device is used to harass others, access inappropriate content, or engage in other prohibitive behavior. Districts are encouraged to use educational and restorative strategies. Strong school culture and climate building supports the long-term success, and I agree with that. I think when buildings have pushed through and kids have accepted that, they do, even the kids themselves can see that they are making more friends, are relating better. But, uh, the great challenge is, you know, many people describe cellphone use as an addiction. And so we're going to be, uh, there's a lot of work here.
What's a restorative strategy?
So restorative, um, is trying to, uh, so we have been teaching restorative practices with disciplines, so if you harm another student, they, our goal would be to bring that person together. So in the case of harassment over cellphone, you could use restorative there. Um, it may or may not apply, Chris, to a student who just continually gets a phone.
Yeah, trying to see how that would be related.
Yeah. We would have a great conversation with the student about how important it is to maximize instructional time for their learning and that the cellphone is distracting other learners from their ability to learn, and I'm sure that would change their behavior in that particular situation.
So, we will, um, we will work on these things. Chris Green has also put the current policy that we have on the books under E1. And so that is, um, information for you that you may compare with, uh, what we've shared with you tonight and, uh, what that would look like. But it's a departure now, obviously, from that, and we'll be moving into this, uh, info.
Question for clarity. So, the plan that we're, that the executive order is out, laying out is that elementary, middle school, and high school will not be able to utilize their devices from the beginning of school to the end of school?
Yes.
Okay.
Looks different, different ages for sure.
Yeah.
But we also know that young kids spend a lot more time on the phones than they use.
What, yeah? Elementary, I'm all for it. Middle school, I'm 50/50, although I saw the, how quiet and organized Calipoya was when we walked through, the three of us. It was impressive, uh, and then those cellphone signs on the wall, uh, were being enforced, and the learning environment was top-notch. Yeah. So I really see the value. High school, I think it's going to be a little harder to go. Yeah, but we'll see.
Yeah, I mean, the top-down, that's ridiculous, right? It's like, you know, the culture is important and buy-in and you can't, you know, it is disruptive to instruction to use cellphones, but also cellphone's something everybody has, and if we're talking about it, don't exist, we're not doing it, it's a school district. We should be teaching kids how to use them appropriately, teaching them how to not be addicted. You know, not just ignoring them during the school day, that's, and, and it's never going to work. You're going to, this is not going to work, you're not, you're just not, it's not going to happen. I, it's just, look, imagine this, right? Everybody, uh, everybody finished their lesson early, so they're doing stuff on the laptop. Everybody, uh, everybody finished their lesson early, so they're doing stuff on the laptops and they're playing math games or whatever. Kid pulls out his phone and texts, say, "Hey Jimmy, you're supposed to be, you can't text at school because that's, you know, you're, you're interrupting your instruction." He's like, "Well, everybody else is playing video games. How is texting any different than that?" Right? Like, you should know restorative for that. Like, that's just straight up following that direction from somebody in Salem that has no clue what they're talking about. So, it frustrates me. But, I think it's going to be a difficult lift and it's not going to be good for kids. To not have it be a locally controlled thing where, you know, the staff is bought in and people are making, we're going to make our own decisions and teach kids instead of just, you know, telling them what to do and punish when they don't do it. Sorry, I missed my two sentences. It frustrates me.
That's all I have. Okay, uh, board reports. So, uh, I was going to take a minute. In the past, there's been some overlap in what I think are two separate agenda items. Board member reports and then what I would call future agenda items. So, for me, board reports is when board members talk about something they've done at, and their job as a board member, whether that's visiting the school, going to a civic meeting, doing some other activity in their roles as board member that they want to come back and share with us and with the public. Whereas, I think the future agenda items would be where we talk about things we're concerned about, we've heard about, that we would like the superintendent to do or answer with questions about it. Does that make sense? Does everybody sort of see it that way? Including myself included, there's going to be a overlap. I'd use the board reports that ask questions, maybe it's not already identified, so. Okay, so, board reports. Does anybody have anything that they want to share?
Well, it's kind of, um, a communications thing. The, the city of Albany has installed cameras and they seem to like school zones. And this led to an issue, uh, where, I forget which one it was, either North Albany Middle School or North Albany Elementary was closed, the other one wasn't. There was a sign posted, people thought school was closed and so, we didn't communicate well. There's going to be the opportunity for that same problem at Memorial and West Albany and Queen Street. Uh, so, I just want to make sure that we give it some thought, uh, really the right solution. And I see Michael Thompson's in the background. Thank you, Michael, for being here. The right solution would be to have a flashing yellow light to warn people, "Hey, school is in session." Uh, but I think it's a $60,000 tab, uh, something like that, per flashing light to inform people of that. So, we need to make sure that our communication is solid so we don't have people getting frustrated and angry because they thought school was posted as being out and it truly wasn't.
So, we do have a couple of known, uh, times in the year where one is in session, the other one's not. I'm meeting with Chief Harndon next Monday afternoon and we're going to discuss that and I'm sure that the opportunity for some flashing yellow lights will also be discussed.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yellow light.
Okay. That's just not pronounced, call each person issue. So, we'll go to Director Luntzer. Do you have anything to report? No? Director Hough?
No, perfect. I don't have anything direct there. Just, uh, want to welcome the two new board members and look forward to the start of school.
Yep, actually. And I don't have anything either, other than to dill that and mark. Okay, uh, next up is consent agenda. Uh, we're going to move, uh, consent agendas. Uh, I want to do it a little differently this year. There's only one thing on at this time, but oftentimes the consent agenda is a bunch of different things that are, uh, somewhat I wouldn't, like, if they're already hand-waving, there are things like hiring and things that we just sort of have, that we have to approve, uh, but that we don't really have a lot of discussion or say on. So, my thought is, we, we approve the entire consent agenda as a batch and if anybody wants to discuss anything specifically, uh, they ask, "Will we do the agenda?", we pull it out. Say, "I'd like to pull out that particular item from consent agenda and then get to that item and then we can discuss it in the majority." And, and I've had the staff as a surety, they won't put any, um, financial issues into consent agenda because I think that was a concern a couple of years ago that there was money being buried in there and being approved and not being talked about. So, they, they've assured me they won't do that in the consent agenda. Well, and it always stands that the consent agenda, any single board member can pull that from the consent through discussion at any time.
Okay. One thing also, if we do, if we do that, when we get our, uh, the board report sent to us prior to the meeting, is that something where it will still be numbered separately? So, if we want to pull out a specific item, we don't have to delivery off the entire title. We can just say, "G1" or...
Yeah, "G1", yep.
Okay, sweet. Just want to make sure.
Okay, so, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent, consent agenda as presented.
Move, do I have a second? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, new business. Uh, looks like we've got organizational resolutions we need to approve. This is assigned, it's right, staff sent us. Yeah, this is just, this is task duty that we have to do every year. So, I guess I'll, first I'll entertain a motion, we'll have a chance for discussion for that, to approve the, uh, organizational resolutions.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve organizational resolutions as presented.
Okay, it's been moved, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, if it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion on the organizational resolutions? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass. All right, school bus purchasing plan. Says presented, but I don't have a presentation on it.
Chris, are we able to see that PowerPoint? Good evening. So, tonight I wanted to just talk with you about our purchasing program and I will ask you, in the end of it, to approve just our purchasing plan. And so, I started that with just a picture of our, um, this is last year at the end of the year when our transportation department had a barbecue. There are about 100 employees that make up the transportation team. And so, they had a big barbecue and took this picture, so they shared that with me. And so, um, this slide just explains financially what occurred. When I came to the district, we were in the practice of every year leasing buses and increasing our lease debt. And so, um, we are transitioning out of that and transitioning to purchasing. So, the first line, the blue line, shows you the lease cost across the years. And eventually, I think, like, 2930, that will be zero. And the next line shows the reimbursement from the basic school support transportation grant. So, the cost, total cost of the lease and the purchase, we are reimbursed at 70% through that transportation grant. That's a component of our basic school support. And then, we have additional support in a general fund transfer to be able to meet the needs that, that we're looking at. And the beginning fund balance is kind of what rolls forward. It's not what we rely on to support the program at all. And so, you can see, um, when we made the original transition, '23, '24, we did not purchase buses. And then, '24, '25, we've been able to put that into practice and as the lease costs will go down, we'll have more purchasing power without having to increase that transfer. And before I go to the next slide, are there questions on this slide?
Will that, will that have an effect on the agent fleet? Will you only turn them over at the same rate?
So, this just shows you the savings in interest. So, it was about $72,000 and by '26, '27, it is below $20,000. And the other big advantage beside the savings of interest is we're not obligating the district for future expenses. So, when those leases are in place, we have to have the funds to pay that back. If we're in hard times and we don't absolutely have to purchase, then we don't have that obligation. So, that's another advantage of doing the purchase. It does not obligate the district for future dollars. And so, the purchasing procedures that Dave and I, um, have put together is we determine the busing needs and we'll be bringing those to you in the next month or two. And for every purchase, we get three quotes. We will bring you the quotes and the needs for our fleet and the buses will be ordered after board approval. Buses are received the following year. So, the buses we will receive and pay for in '25, '26 were ordered in '24, '25. And so, it just takes that long for that whole process to work. And the buses we were received that have been ordered, two special education buses, and we've only ordered one type 10 van at this time. So, um, Dave and his team will assess the need. If we, we have the budget authority for two type 10 vans, but this time, we only have the one on order. And that's a type 10 van. I asked them to send me a picture because I wasn't sure what the type 10 van looked like. And that is, that was it. Do you have questions?
So, the primary emphasis we talked behind the change is not obligating us for future debt and reducing our interest costs.
That's correct.
So, then, Gene, we're going to have a budget, uh, line item there. So, we'll be able to pay cash for the buses that are on our list to replace? So, we won't have any interest expense at all?
Eventually, we do have existing leases.
Sure, I, I, yeah, I'm talking about the new purchases.
That's correct.
New purchases will come from funds, so we don't have to borrow money to do it.
That's correct.
Okay, so, you want, do you want board approval for the plan?
Yes.
Okay, so, we've seen the plan. I would entertain a motion to approve the new bus purchasing plan.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the school bus purchasing plan as presented.
Okay, it's been moved, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, now we have moved on to, uh, public comments. This is my first time running public comment. I'm sure I will screw it up. Uh, okay, so first I'm going to, uh, we have nobody signed up for a virtual public comment. Is there a thing that was just for you?
I don't believe we had any online, however. Got no written comments, I don't think.
Read through what?
Let's read through this.
Oh, the slide. Okay. I will attempt to do some. Okay, to provide public comments, state your name. State if you reside within the district or work for the district and your affiliation with the district as a student, parent, staff, community member, or community partner. And then, share your public comment. Comments will be three minutes long. Uh, we have a policy around, you know, we're not going to let you criticize staff members. You can certainly criticize the district operations, um, but any individuals, I'm going to cut you off and ask you not to do that. I think that's it. We're not supposed to comment back, but we, some of us can't help it. We'll try. So, we have two people, uh, signed up. Call it order. First up, uh, will be Beth, uh, Bong...
Barkston.
Barkston, and then after that will be Liz Craig. Beth, you're up first.
First, I wanted to say it's been a pleasure to be at this board meeting and I hope that the new board will have a positive influence on the public, on our education. My husband and I do not have children. We live in the district, we pay our property taxes. But, it has been appalling to me how the previous board, especially in its first two years, spent money as though it was their private money and of no concern to the public. I start with, uh, their national search for a new superintendent, which was not revealed any details of it until the last two. And then, when, when, um, a superintendent was selected, the salary that was awarded was comparable pretty much to that of the superintendent in Eugene. Eugene having twice as many students as Albany. And so, that was, that was regarded as excessive by many people. And what I would like the district, the school board or someone to do in the interest of regaining some of the public trust which was lost through many things of the last, um, of the last board is, I would like someone to look at the district office salaries and see if the way that salaries were awarded to new district office people followed the same sort of trend as the superintendent's salary. The district office has people from state and it has people who are personal friends with board members. And I realize that contracts are contracts and we have to, uh, respect those. But, going forward, I would like to know, and many people in the public would like to know, that the board would make solid financial decisions. And I would, besides the salaries, I would like to know what the district does with its contingency fund because that's a lot of money. What kind of things is it used for? Thank you.
Okay, uh, Liz Craig.
Liz Craig, Greater Albany Ace Association. I'm also resident. Um, I just want to say thank you guys. Thank you for staying on the board, being on the board. Um, we have a lot of really exciting things coming up for class five this year. A really big bargain for us. We have our internship program. We have all kinds of really great things coming forward. So, just, uh, wanted to say thank you for all the hard work that happens on your guys' end because I know we're working hard too. So, we're just excited for next year.
Thank you. Thank you for agreeing to serve on the Facility Committee. Okay, that brings us to the end of public comment. Uh, and then, we don't have the, we don't have the case up anymore. So, we are on future agenda items. This is where, uh, I would think anybody would suggest or ask if we could consider a future agenda item. Anybody have anything?
I have one.
Okay.
So, um, putting together the long-range Facility Advisory Committee right now and, uh, it is going to be, so I think the last Facility Committee that presented to the board was probably 40 to 50% staff and about 50%, maybe a little bit more, community. Um, we're looking to put together a really large group this time. 25 is what we're shooting for. I think we're at 14 now, community members. Might have gone to 15 or 16 today. Broadly representative. Again, thank, uh, Dana and Liz for being, willing to be a part of that. But, we have also, and I think I sent you guys out the concept of two board members who would sit on that committee as well so that there is some cross-pollination. Really like you guys to give some thought to that and then select those members at the next meeting, who they would be.
Okay.
Uh, our commitment would be that we would continue to bring whatever the, the committee is learning about. It would come to you guys in a board meeting report, like, month by month. And so, um, that way, there's no, um, massive reconciliation between you as the Senate and the committee as the House at the end, so.
And so, there won't be a board member on that committee because we'll get...
Two.
Oh, you said two, I missed that, sorry.
We'd like to, to be on that.
And you want us to discuss that at next meeting?
Yeah.
And give your thought to it.
Okay.
Do you have any idea what the time commitment is?
Uh, it's going to be one meeting a month. It's going to be the first Tuesday. Uh, I would think that we go two to two and a half hours at those meetings because there'll be a lot of information to give. Uh, I think there's going to be some parents that work. That's all I have. Just have to give thought to that.
Any other future agenda items, any board members that we want to discuss? Okay, uh, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? For adjourn.